All right, 7:01, I'm gonna call to order the regular planning board meeting of February 8th, 2022. Consistent with the governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the link provided. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the dial-in number, meeting ID, and passcode provided. Please use dial-in or computer or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information and or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Arnold, town engineer at 781-246-6308. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements and to remove an accessibility barrier for you. All right, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Jim Hogan.
Here.
Theo No.
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
And Bill Spalding.
Here.
All right. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes. We have three sets of meeting minutes. The first one is December 14th, 2021. Did anyone have any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? All right. I'm gonna take a roll call vote to approve the meeting minutes. Actually, do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. I'm gonna take a roll call vote to approve the meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021, as presented. Jim Hogan.
Yes.
Theo No.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Meeting minutes for January 8th, 2022. Anyone have any comments or questions on those? All right, do we hear a motion?
We'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so Theo makes a motion to approve the January 8th, 2022 minutes. And Jim Hogan seconds it, roll call vote. Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Jim Hogan.
Yes.
And Theo No.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, the meeting minutes from January 28th, 2022. Any comments or questions on these? All right, hearing, seeing none, hearing none, do we hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. January 28th, 2022, meeting minutes. We hear roll call vote to approve them. Theo No.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Jim Hogan.
Yes.
And Bill Spalding.
Yes.
All right. All right. We have a public hearing for Stark Ave, definitive subdivision plan. It's to start at 7:15. Let me wait till 7:15 to open that. All right. We'll move on to item number four, discussion of subdivision rules and regulation revisions. I kind of dropped the ball in this. I have done a workup of some notes and I thought that I had sent them out earlier in the week, but it's been one of those weeks and it turns out I didn't, so. I'm gonna get those up to you shortly, so we can discuss it. Let me see if I can even find them. So. Again, what my thought was on this is that we could go through and streamline some of the rules and regulations that we have. Some of the common items for, that we grant waivers on are engineering issues that basically are in our code that we can basically revise with the help of engineering, so those don't need to be waived each time. They are, they can be construction items that the developer needs to handle, but they don't need to actually get a physical waiver from us, so. That's my thought on that. I was gonna start with the A and R regulations. I think I left this stuff on the computer. Basically, for the A and R regulations, what I had marked up to do was basically change the requirement that says that you need to provide so many paper copies, since we are basically all remote right now. I was trying to word that, so we could have the option in there, so if someone came before had a project coming before us, they would basically check to see if we were gonna be remote or in person, and if you're in, if we're gonna be in person, then obviously we would have the paper copies, but otherwise, a lot of this is kind of redundant and wasted right now. When we get to the full subdivision rules and regulations, this may be a little more tricky, because we, on the board, can handle PDFs. It does need to go to other town departments, and I don't know what their capabilities are for doing that, so we'll have to have some modifications for that. But again, I'm gonna, I apologize for not getting this sooner. I'm gonna get this stuff together, so we can go through it. I don't know if anyone has any, have looked at it at all? Bill?
Just wanted to, Matt, if you need some assistance with getting the information out there or talking to some other boards, I'm willing to help.
I think what our big thing we need to do is schedule it with the DPW and get engineering involved. And they've been pretty busy too, so I, I know this is gonna take a while. That's why I'm starting this process now. It's gonna take literally months to work through all this and then have a public hearing, so. I have, I'm not hoping to get this done any, you know, thinking we're gonna get it done in a month or two. I know it's gonna take some time, so.
Hi, this is Erin, sorry, I'm not showing my face. I did talk to Bill, which I said last time, even like CAD plans, I think that'd be really big for them, their department, like to having, after we approve any sort of plans, so we have the CAD plans for GIS. So definitely important to include them, so that's the only thing I wanted to add.
All right. Yeah, I think our rules and regs state right now just a PDF, but yeah, we can, we can put in there that digital CAD format is required also.
Matt, it might even be worth having in there what type of CAD programs are acceptable or form file format and some other information that the DPW can provide for engineering.
Yeah, we'll check on that. See if we can get that straightened out too. So, again, there's not too much to talk about on that at this point, so. And one of the other issues. Erin, are you still on here?
Yep, I'm here, yep.
Okay. We had, item number five is discussion of street change, changing names. I know, Bill, you had put some stuff together on that, and Erin, I think you were working on working on some information also.
Yeah, so I, I'll start. So I reached out to other communities and how they did that, and a lot of them said they went through the engineering department or I didn't hear from them, but I know there's other communities that it does go through the planning department, so if we can just maybe copy that language or cater it to Wakefields, I think that would be the best way to go. So I don't know if Bill has anything to add.
We do, and actually, full effort from our team on the planning board, I have, especially Jim, have a lot of information from other towns. I pulled the Boston information, so we have everything from a smaller town and what they do. Planning board takes care of it, it goes through approvals to what Boston takes care of for street names, where there's a wait, who pays for the street name change, all the signs. So we do have different categories. I have it on an Excel spreadsheet that Jim started, and I have the information in there. So that's ready to discuss and share. What would be the next step, Matt? To put that on our agenda to as a board discussion or submit and talk to engineering first?
I guess the best thing to do is if we come up with some, some rough outline of what we think would be appropriate for Wakefield.
Okay.
Instead of going engineering without anything or other departments, so. Jim?
Yeah, so Bill referenced, you know, he collated them from a number of different sources, but I know just in the limited amount I did, there's a number of elements that there are decision points that we as a board should, you know, have to make in terms of criterion that would be required or not required, you know, timelines of how long it can be since the last time a street was renamed, it can't be named after corporation, you know, those types of things that we just have to kind of give a checklist, yea nay, and then in terms of that application process, there's also kind of a couple of decision points we as a board need to make and specific require requirements for notice to other departments and what the public process looks like. What I would advocate to do as a next step is to take the information that Bill has, distribute out to the balance of the board and kind of, you know, everyone can come up with what they think are appropriate decision points on some of those elements, and then we as a board could, you know, review it at one of our planning boards with it being on the agenda, and then, you know, hash out whatever we think the process should be, collate that process and then send it to engineering.
Okay. Actually, let's continue the discussion after we have, after the public hearing for Stark Ave. And just to fill people, the reason why we're doing this is because there has been a request that came to the town to change the name of the street and we had looked through our code, and apparently at some point in time, Wakefield had a bylaw and a procedure for street name changes, and that somehow had been dropped. So in order to, you know, set up a procedure that we don't have any abuse of, you know, since we people could be bringing all kinds of different street name changes pretty quickly. We want to make sure that we have something in place before we entertain this first one, so that's why, that's why we're in, we're doing this endeavor to try to get something set, so. All right, so we're gonna bring, take this up again after the public hearing for Stark Ave, so. All right, it is 7:15. Open up the public hearing for Stark Ave, definitive subdivision. Peter, I see you there, so. I know, just off the bat, that your team had filed for an extension, or not an extension, but a you wanted to postpone this and come to another meeting. And as I had started, as I had pointed out at the start of this process, myself, I feel that if you're gonna schedule a public hearing and people are in, come to show that you need to, we need to have the public hearing, so that's why I refuse to to move this along to our next meeting, so. That's why we're gonna have it tonight. I don't, I understand that you don't have all your plans ready yet, but this was scheduled, then this is why we're going forward with it, so. All right, Peter?
Sure. Completely understandable, Mr. Chairman, not a problem. Just for the record, Peter Blaisdell from Williamson Sprages, project engineer. So, just, just for the reason we wanted to continue, Mr. Chairman, is we had a Zoom conference on January 11th with Bill Renault, Tim Wilson, Aaron Kokinda, Jill Mann, the applicant Scott Green, and myself. We went through, they didn't quite have the, all their comments done yet, but they had a fair amount of them. So we had a, we had actually a very productive meeting. We went through a lot of the changes and their concerns, so they were gonna work on getting those changes made to their full, full list of comments. We just received that on February 1st, so I've been working on it for about four or five days now, but I'm not, I'm not completely done. So that was one of the reasons we wanted to continue, just so that, you know, if you ask questions tonight, I wanted to see new plans, that I wasn't just gonna say I don't have anything for you yet, but just to give you a little bit of what we did to date, just so you, so you understand. We were requested by Mr. Chairman, I believe in the December meeting, to reach out to the Conservation Commission, just to see if they might want us to locate some more trees on the north side of of Stock Ave, and they said, yes, they would appreciate that, so we went out, we relocated additional trees on the other side, so you'll be seeing those as well. I believe Elaine had some questions about some of the wetland flags. She asked us if we could do a little more wetland flagging, kind of define the wetlands a little bit more, so we did that as well, and we located those. Bill and Tim had a couple of, couple of questions. You know, everybody knows that down the bottom of the hill, it gets rather sandy, but up on the, you know, as you start to come up the hill towards the south, you know, it looks like it starts to get a little bit rocky and that type of thing. So they asked us to do some additional test pits, just to see if we could kind of figure out on the topography where the soils changed from being a little bit more dense and rocky to more of sandy, so we did additional test pits on January 18th. So we'll be putting those on the next set of plans and also giving the soil logs back to Bill and Tim. The only other thing that we had was just, I know, I know a letter came back from Tom Mullen. I think he, and I'm not even gonna go into it, because it's above my pay grade. He did get, he did get back, I think, a letter to Attorney Man at, I believe, Aaron's request about the, the status of a subdivision, and is this a subdivision, and can you move the road and that type of thing? And again, I'm not, I'm not gonna go into it, I'm sure everybody can read it. We're proceeding as this is a subdivision anyways, so. Good, good to have the information, but we're proceeding as if it is a subdivision. And that's, that's really it. I don't have any other, any other things to give you this evening, other than just, just that update. I'm working on the response letter. There's a couple of concerns that engineering had about some of the drainage features, they made some suggestions. Interestingly enough, I think we discussed at one of the prior hearings, I was under the assumption, or maybe somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't think there were any other low-impact development projects in Wakefield, but apparently there are a couple more. Aaron was gonna try to get me a couple of examples, I just wanted to see, you know, if there's anything that the Wakefield Engineering kind of liked to see, or if there's anything else that they'd used before that they appreciated. I'm gonna hopefully get that back at some point, I think somebody was gonna put together for me, but other than that, we're hoping to have everything back to to Bill and Tim in the next week or two, give them the calculations, the plans, that hopefully we can have a response back for you on March 8th.
Right. Peter, do you, do you know when you're gonna file with Conservation?
So, um, I'm thinking we're probably gonna file with Conservation right around the same time we get you your, your last hopefully the last revision, this will be the third revision. And the reason, and the reason we've just been holding off, Mr. Chairman, is just, there was a couple technicalities on, you know, whether what we were doing met the stormwater management standards or not, and we just want to make sure that that's all ironed out with engineering, because if they are okay with everything that we're doing, then we're gonna put it into Conservation, so that they understand that we've met all, all 10 of the stormwater standards and that there's no, I don't wanna say, oh, engineering's okay with this, but not okay with that. You know what I mean? I'd like to at least get it to them, so if they say, yeah, this is, this is what we talked about, and then you know, once we put it into Conservation, they'll, they'll have that letter that says that all the drainage is, is up to snuff.
All right, because, I mean, typically in these, these situations, the planning board has done these subdivisions concurrently when they're going through Conservation, so even if
I agree.
Even if you believe that your next revision may be your last one, there's always some changes that come from Conservation, so.
What we were, what we were really looking to do, Mr. Chairman, and rest of the members, is when we met on the 11th, you know, my, my feeling was if, if it seemed like we were kind of of the same mind that this could happen, that we needed to do some changes, then we gotta keep on making those changes. If we essentially just got blown out of the water, then I was thinking, all right, maybe we're never gonna get these waivers and, you know, maybe we have to try something else. So I think we're almost there, I just have to demonstrate a few things to engineering that specifically relate to the stormwater standards. I don't want to put any calculations or stormwater report into the Conservation Commission that isn't fully vetted by the engineering department, and I, and I agree with you, a lot of times we do file concurrently with Conservation and Planning Board, but, but not always. Especially with, with this project, it just, you know.
Yep. So you guys are looking to, to come back before us on March 8th?
Yes.
And then that would leave, the second meeting of March would be the 22nd. As it is, you've already filed an extension to April 1st.
Okay.
So. I if we don't have another extension by April 8th, we will schedule a meeting for the 22nd and close this out and vote on it. Just again, I'm not gonna have a constructive, constructive approval on this, so I'm gonna leave, leave the board plenty of time in order to act on it, so.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't want that. Frankly, frankly, we don't, we don't want constructive approval, we just, we wanna, we wanna get this in, so that everybody's on board, happy with it as much as possible, and.
Well, just, I guess this is my warning, make sure the, the approval is, the, the request for an extension is in far enough in advance, so we don't have to, you know, go down this road, so.
Okay, I mean, the only thing I can't control, Mr. Chairman, is just, you know, how long it's gonna take to get a response and a review letter out of the engineering department, but I'll, I'll make sure that, I know, I know Jill Mann is watching the clock, and if we have to push it out a little further we can, or, or like you said, if it comes, if it comes to that, that time, I think we'll have everything straightened away and we'll have a filing with the Conservation as well.
All right, so you did receive the plan that was prepared next door to this, correct, in 2016?
I, I believe that was the one that was had wetland flags by LEC, if I'm not mistaken, okay.
Yeah. Have you, have you received a copy of that, or?
I, I believe, Aaron, I think Aaron or Elaine might have sent one over, yeah.
Okay, because it, it does seem, seem to show, you know, some topography out there that differs from your plan, so that's why.
Yeah, we, we agree. We agree to disagree. We went out and checked it again, and we, we don't understand where that line came from, the way they drew it. So I think that's something that we'll have to just make sure that when, when our wetland scientist goes out to walk it with the Conservation Agent, that and I certainly understand what their concern was, because I didn't even realize that that plan was out there, but they were, they were afraid that by doing what we're doing, we're gonna be filling some wetlands, and frankly, we're not getting the same result when we, when we go out to delineate the line that they did. So we'll have to, we'll have to take that up with Conservation.
Yeah, which is why it's equally important that, you know, the planning board is still, has this before them, because that could significantly change the roadway crossing there, so.
Exactly, and what I'm doing right now, Mr. Chairman, is I have to do, Tim and Bill just asked me to look at a couple of different calculations. They asked me to update the long-term operation and maintenance plan, so that it's a requirement that the homeowners association will have to do an annual inspection and submit that to engineering. And I think we touched on that early on, that, that's one of the things that a lot of towns are, and, and planning boards are trying to do is they're trying to hold some of these subdivisions that have been going on for a while accountable for actually submitting reports and inspections to make sure that things are operating the way they're supposed to be. So that's, that's kind of what we're doing right now, is we're updating the stormwater report. Once that's, once that's done, then that's gonna go right in with the notice of intent filing.
All right. All right, do any of the board members have anything, any comments at this point? Jim?
Mr. Blaisdell, for the trenches, reading the report from engineering, and I obviously understand the caveat that you, you haven't gone through it and addressed all the comments yet. There were a number of questions and concerns as it relates to the, I would call the, conceptually, the infiltration trench. Is that continues to be the, the basis of the design that is being utilized? Given some of the concerns that were raised in the engineering report?
Yeah, it is. And interestingly enough, by the time I was, you know, you know, engineers are like everybody, right? You try to get five in the same room and get them all to agree on anything, it's, it's usually not gonna happen, like any profession. However, Bill and, Bill and Tim are very reasonable guys. I went through every option that I had looked at, that had tried and had not worked. And then I, I showed them three or four different examples of projects that currently we have had built and are working on, and that we had used a similar feature. And I said, if you have any other suggestions of how I can make this, I said, really, I have no pride in this. If there's any suggestion you have to get me to make this better, let me know. And they, and they really didn't have anything, so they just wanted to make sure that we're gonna do a couple of things, like we're gonna try to add some stone check dams, so that, you know, the runoff can kind of be captured in separate sections, so that, you know, any runoff coming down the hill or off the road doesn't just rush right to one spot. Also, they're concerned that, you know, kind of like we talked about a little bit with, especially this weekend, I mean, driving around this evening, I don't know if it's the same in Wakefield, but I'm driving through Wilmington, Tuxbury, and Bill Rickert tonight, and there's roads closed everywhere, because the catch basins are overflowed, or the, you know, this or that, it's just, if you have ice, snow, freeze, ice, snow, freeze, rain, it, it just wreaks havoc on all types of drainage systems. They asked me to look into possibly putting in like an overflow structure on one side, which I'm, I'm working on now. Other than that, they asked me to do a couple of different clarifications for calculations, but I did explain to them that these, these things, if maintained, very similar to, you know, any of the drainage around town, if maintained, it works properly. If it's not maintained, it doesn't.
And then, I think I heard you say, one of the other concerns I had was some of the comments as it relates to maintenance. Specifically, you know, the, the engineering report from Mr. Renault denotes that aggressive maintenance is required to make sure that these stay in good working order, especially to your point as it relates to snow and ice. Is, is, is it just a man, or, and if we're getting too far in the weeds on the maintenance for right now, because you haven't figured it out yet, that, that's totally fine, but is the intent to still only have it be an annual for the requirements from the homeowners association to maintain?
So we have, so we're gonna, we're gonna, one of the things we talked about was setting up the homeowners association, and we tried to, we tried to come up with a dollar amount, which we'll certainly share with you, but so what we were thinking of is, at the very beginning, the applicant will probably deposit $6,000 into a, into a fund, and that fund is gonna be for inspection, maintenance, any type of repairs that need. And then as, as homes are sold, you know, each, each homeowner would probably put in $2,000 into that account, and then the applicant would be reimbursed, but the maintenance program The maintenance program does need to be, uh, somewhat aggressive and we usually say that for the first couple of seasons, they need to be inspected. More frequently. Once, once they become a little more established and start working better. Um, then they, they typically, as long as, as long as they're not getting, you know. People are dumping dirt in them or brass clippings or that type of thing, then they seem to work. Um, and just case in point, I, I, I said, I live over Bill Ricka and one of, uh, one of the streets here right off, they redid a few years ago and. One side of the street actually has curbs and catch basins. The other side of the street is, um, low impact development. Uh, it's a trench that runs the entire length of the road with, uh, grass whale and I drove by tonight just to see how it was working and. You know, kinda like we all thought, I mean, it, there's snow on the side, um. It's, it's got a couple of places where it's ponding a little bit, but it's the same thing on the other side of the street where the catch basin is, and then there's some areas where. Uh, the water is then making it past the snow and is going into the trench and then the trench is then carrying the water, uh. The way it's supposed to, so, um, I would like to see, yes, an aggressive maintenance prob, uh, cuz I, I'm designing this thing and I want it to work. And I don't want this thing to fail, so I'm, I'm always very pro maintenance for these things, especially when they first get going until they get established and then. After big storms or, you know, somebody sees some damage to, to definitely get on it and start fixing them.
And then, um, the last, the last batch of questions I had at, or as it relates to, there was a, a large portion of the engineering report that. Re- um, recommended, um, not making this a public way if certain waivers were not, um, were, were granted by this, by this board.
Right.
What is, what is the proposed action item from the design team or is that still under evaluation in terms of, um, conforming with those? Recom- recommendations from the engineering department or, um, are you looking at potentially making this a private way?
So, um. You know, Tim and Bill basically said, um, we don't have a problem with a lot of these waivers, but, you know, they would probably recommend that, uh, it remain a private way. I, I don't think it's a problem for the applicant to keep it a private way, um, I'm not sure, but again, I have no say over what the town wants to do. Um, so, one of the conditions was, um. So the engineering division doesn't allow H D P E pipes into the roadway. If this waiver request is accepted, the D P W engineering division recommends the roadway not be accepted at all. Maintenance of the drainage system be maintained by a homeowners association. And we just, excuse me. We talked about that and I, our responses agreed, no further response required, so, um. Yeah, I, I don't know if, I know that the town is gonna have to pick up the trash. Um, I think the town's gonna have to plow the road, cuz I know even in my town, the town still plows, uh, private roads, but when it comes to. Repairing the drainage system, that's gonna be on the homeowners association.
So, high level, the, the direction that the, the development team is pursuing is utilization of a private way. In order to real, provide relief from those recommended denials from, or nonconformance from those, those elements.
I, I believe, yeah, I believe that's the position that Tim and, and, uh. And Bill were taking that, um, they really don't have a problem with waving the cross sections, but they're just saying that, you know, um. It, it should be private then.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
No problem, sir.
And, and Jim, just a little back, back history, so every, every town or every road that gets constructed in Wakefield. Starts off as a private way and then the town has to formally accept it, so. I don't know if there's anything that can go in the documents that would, you know, say. It can't be accepted, that all comes up to the, the people in charge at the time, uh, one of our last. The D P W directors like to get a lot of roads accepted to, in order to bolster the. The road money, that, yeah, the, the, the road money that we can get from the state, so. Uh, a- and even some roads that were not particularly, uh. The best got accepted just so we could get some more road money, so.
Who, who are the, uh, who are the roadway commissioners in Wakefield? Is the worst selection?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, I think it's a D P W director along with the, uh, with the town council now, so.
Yeah, that's kind of a, kind of a bygone era. There's no more roadway commissioners anymore. Now they just, it's either selectmen or like you said, sometimes planning board.
Yeah, we, we do comment on them if, if they come up, so. Alright, do any of the board members have anything? Comments, questions?
Um, just a process question, is there, um, so. Uh, a drop dead date when they need to file another extension beyond April first?
Well, we need to get, we need to get notice that they're, they're extending. Before April first, or obviously we're not gonna go till April first if we don't have a, a meeting planned for that, you know. Then, because if we went past that, it could get a constructive, uh. Approval, which, yeah, nobody wants, so. And that's why I wanna make sure that we have it in plenty of time. I- if we don't have it by the. By March eighth, I know that our, the next meeting will definitely have a public hearing and, and at that point, we would, uh. We would close public testimony and, and vote on what we have at that point.
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be great to. Have, um, everybody go over it on March eighth and if there's a couple more. Final points we need to done, it would be great to have it closed and, and voted on the, uh, well, at least, at least closed on the twenty second, so.
Well, I, I know that's not gonna happen if, if you haven't filed with conservation.
I'm, I'm hoping to get that, uh, like I said, we've got the paperwork pretty much ready to go. I've just gotta update the report and then, um. Get the checks and, and get it over, so.
Yeah, it's gotta get advertised too, so that there's a delay.
Oh, yeah, we would, we wouldn't miss out on all, all the fun, no, that's good.
Alright. Is there, is there a maximum, like, uh, extension, uh, timeframe, like? Yeah, an extra hundred, yeah.
It, it's extending it is, is totally up to the petitioner's option. So it's not like the board can say, you, you need to spend another hundred days on this, it's, it's the petitioner, so. Um, we're, we're the ones in, that have to watch the clock and make sure that we don't go past that, so.
Yeah.
Whatever date that they, usually it gets extended three or four months at a time to make sure there's plenty of, plenty of time in there.
Just, thank you.
Alright, um. I'm gonna open this. Up to public comment, but first, um, I see, uh. Stephen Howe, I see you on, uh, you had sent a letter to the board that we received, um, and, you know. I wanna particularly, uh, discuss it with you first because you're the one of the, one of the people that, uh. Basically shoulder the burden for the current turnaround out there because it is basically on your property, so, and. And I see you don't even, uh, get credit for that from the assistant department, it looks like, so, but, um. Do you want me to share your letter or would you wanna, do you wanna speak on your behalf? How do you wanna handle this?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Um, if you wanna share the letter, that's fine, but what I, my concern is. Um, if, if I can just take a minute, we're, I'm at fifty eight Stark Ave right now. Um, so we're the last house on the right, um. And my expectation and my. I guess my strong expectation would be if Stark Ave is gonna be extended. I don't see many streets with a cul-de-sac in the middle of the street or anywhere but the end of the street. It's, it's what a cul-de-sac is. And I, I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I attended the first meeting and there, there were. A lot of comments about the, their plans making this. Sort of a turnaround, not, didn't sound like a full cul-de-sac to me, um. So my expectation would be that they, that would be a very serviceable. Um, termination of Stark Ave, not just a driveway for three new houses. And. That that would. Allow the town to abandon the easement they have for road purposes on my property and restore it. Maybe an expense they would pass on to this developer to its, uh, original state. Which would be a straight curb, like, uh, like, uh. You know, what it, what it should be without a cul-de-sac, without a, cuz it's not actually even a cul-de-sac, it's only on one side of the street, my side of the street. Uh, but, but that, that aside. Um, what, what was just being discussed about the, the, this high maintenance drainage issue. If, if you're able to do that, and I hope you can, put, put a cul-de-sac down there so that trash trucks and snowplows can go down there. You're gonna have very, very large amounts of snow. In salt and all the things that go with snow, oil and everything that gets picked up with it, going into that waterway. Uh, there's a, there's a substantial pile of it on my front lawn right now. And, and I don't fault the, the plow drivers for that, that it's a circle and it, it's gonna come off the plow somewhere, um. But, again. If, if you're gonna extend the street, the cul-de-sac goes to the end of the street. And otherwise, you know, I really, really don't think myself and my neighbors wanna see. Three more houses dragging their trash barrels and recycle bins up to my, to the front of our houses. Because the trucks can't get down there, um. And like I say, when you're talking about what sounds like a, a kind of fragile drainage system. You might wanna consider the snowplow implications of that. Um, and again, I, I, I would like someone to address what will happen to the existing cul-de-sac as opposed to the. In the creation of a new cul-de-sac. I think that's it for me.
So, Peter, can you, can you speak on, on this? I know, uh, your last set of plans, you had. The, indicated that you were gonna leave the cul-de-sac, uh, the temporary turnaround there. Is that gonna be part of your new plans?
So, um, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Howe, our, our original set of, um, our submittal set. Of the set of drawings actually had us, um. Had us removing the cul-de-sac, uh, in front of your property and, um. Repaving your driveway and matching into the, and resurfacing, but, uh, we met with quite a bit of opposition. Um, after the October thirteenth meeting to the point where, um. We took it off and we, we, uh, changed the plan so that the cul-de-sac that's currently in front of your property is gonna stay as is.
What, what sort of opposition?
Um, there was opposition from the neighborhood, um, I believe the planning board didn't think it was a good idea either, and, and again, I. I don't have my notes in front of me from that hearing, but, um. Basically all, I, I'd say most of the feedback that we got from removing that pavement in front of your property, uh, was met with, uh, negative feedback.
Well, I, I think I can speak on, on part of that. At least to me, it was, if you're just gonna reproduce what's there further down the road. That that was gonna be n- not acceptable. I, I don't think anyone says, since it's, you know, keep it there, it's just that you're reproducing something that doesn't work. Further down the road. At least that, that's what I got out of it. Uh, I did not get that people didn't want it removed at all.
Um, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd have, I'd have to look at my notes, but I, I recall distinctly leaving, uh, uh. Making a note that most of the neighbors were against removing it. Uh, again, I'm not gonna cross swords with you. You might have better, but I, af- after that meeting, uh. Jill Scott and I discussed it and it, it, it sounded like it did not go over well, so we took it off the plan, which is. The way the plans have been since the, um, the revision after October, uh, thirteenth. So the next set of plans that you got, um, that were revised on December, I'm sorry, November twenty fourth. Uh, we removed that cul-de-sac and we mentioned that in a letter to you and I, I haven't heard anybody mention that at all, either engineering or anybody saying that they. That they wanted to have it removed, so we were under the assumption that that's, that's the way they wanted, that the town wanted to do it, was to keep that the way it was. I could certainly talk to the client again, uh, but I, this is the first time I've heard anything from Mr. Howe, um. On his, on his feelings of the matter, I think in three or four public hearings.
Well, yeah, see, he. I was the one who pointed out that, uh, you know, was he notified that this was not coming out? So, and I think he got back from me that, or, from someone saying that now, now it's gonna stay there. I never ever expected it was gonna stay, so, um. If you got that impression, uh, I'm sorry, but I would expect that it would be removed because it is temporary. It's, it says on it temporary, if you're gonna keep it there, then it's permanent. And he would have to be compensated for his property if you're gonna keep it permanent. So, uh, and I, is.
I, I, I actually agree with everything you're saying, um. However, that, that didn't seem to be the feeling of that night, and again, I. Me, uh, myself, Jill and Scott all agreed the same thing, that removing the cul-de-sac did not seem to go over well. Um, if, if that's not the case and we misunderstood it, then we can, we can talk about putting it, putting it back in, but, um. Again, uh, I, I, I had no knowledge if, uh, if Mr. Howe had actually spoken to Mr. Green or. Uh, again, this is, this is the third set of, I'm sorry, this is gonna be the second set of revisions where the. Where the cul-de-sac was remaining in place, this is the first I've heard that, uh, that we wanna go back to the original submittal. Which showed it being removed. Unless somebody, unless somebody remembers something different that I, 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 I don't know, that was the impression that I got a couple of months ago.
Alright, well, I, I can tell you.
Me, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, if I can, if I can just speak for a moment, this is Mary Ann Power, forty nine Stark Avenue. Um, I was the one that raised the concerns, um, that Mr. Lowery referenced. Um, that, you know, you're taking a bad situation and you're just moving it further down the street. I never was under the impression that, that this, um, the current situation would remain. Um, nor did I ever, uh, suggest that it should.
Uh, don't, certainly don't wanna single you out, uh, Mrs. Power, I, I, I don't remember who said it, I, I, I believe it was not just you, there were multiple people that. Um, voiced their displeasure with it, but again, I, I'll talk to the client. If, if, well, let me just, does everybody wanna see it removed?
Well, I, well, I wanna see it removed if the project goes forward. I mean, the, the town takes an easement against private property. As a matter of necessity. If they're gonna put a functional turnaround as a part of extending the road. It's no longer necessary and as, as the chairman said. It, it should be taken away or I, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense that it's there anymore. I mean, you said I should be compensated, that's, that's not what I'm looking for. I, it just doesn't make sense. You don't see a cul-de-sac and then a road continue.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Howe, that was, I, I agree with you and that was the point that I made. Four months ago and it, and it didn't, uh, so that was supposed to be a temporary turnaround nineteen fifty-eight and I, that's what I mentioned. So.
Right, and I don't, I don't want it to continue to be a convenience for people who. You know, just wanna turn around in front of my house. Because they don't have any necessity to go a few houses further. I mean, at the end of the road is the end of the road. Uh, again, I'm belaboring the point, I think you get it.
I, I, I would, I agree with you one hundred percent, um.
But, but I would want you to keep in mind that impact on your drainage issue, um, it's a lot of snow.
So, um.
Lot of dirty snow.
I, I'll, I'll bring, I'll, I'll bring it up again and anybody that's been outside of four ninety-five in Massachusetts or New Hampshire or Maine. It's the same type of drainage system, it's not fragile, um, it works just fine, um. So, I, I can tell you right now, most of the problems I have in my neighborhood right now, uh, are from brand new catch basins that were put in as part of Route one twenty-nine, they're all clogged. This puddle's the size of a football field and then we've got other areas that actually have low impact development with, with trenches that. There's no curbing and they're working just fine, so. It all depends on what you're getting for weather and lately we've had terrible weather for drainage systems.
Alright, uh, thank you, so, um, Peter, you, you would just ask, um, how other people feel about. Leaving this, uh, temporary turnaround. Here, uh, I know, uh, I'm gonna say right now, it would be, you know, if this is gonna stay, then I would definitely be against this project completely, so. I, I would wanna see it, it. The, the temporary turnaround on this gentleman and, uh, Mr. Howe's property to be removed, so. Other board members, uh, how do you feel about this? Just so the, uh, applicant knows exactly what, uh, is expected. other board members, uh, how do you feel about this? Just so the applicant knows exactly what is expected. Jim?
I I agree that this temporary, even though it's been nineteen fifty something uh, condition should be removed if this project moves moves forward, to be clear.
Thank you. Uh, Bill?
Um, I I'm looking in the same direction after hearing from Mr. Howe and other um, residents of the the street of Stark Ave. It it's just really good to understand more and the more we hear from the residents, the more we understand about conditions like this. So having the turnaround put into the new proposed plan seems like the right way to go.
All right, Theo and Megan, you have any comments on this?
No, I I I certainly agree with with, uh, uh, Matt, Jim, you and 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 Bill. It's the temporary cul-de-sac should not stay.
I'm in agreement as well.
All right. All right, uh, I think you got pretty clear direction there, Peter, on this, so.
Okay. I will, I will, I will relay that to the applicants.
Okay.
Like I said, I'll have to, I'll, then I'll, then I'll mention it in the letter to, um, to Bill and Tim.
Okay. All right, um, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open this up to anyone else, uh, from the public who would, uh, like to comment on this at this point. Uh, Bron, when I see you have your hand up.
Ah, yes, Brown and Delve will be eight Cyrus Street. Um, I I'm sort of looking at this from a sort of a longitudinal um, perspective. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, future maintenance and and the the management uh, team, um, you know, making sure all of this works. And I I have some strong concerns about that um, based on my own experience, um, with long-term plans and and orders of conditions. I I I would just recommend, suggest that the board be, you know, really, really certain um, that every T has been crossed and every I dotted, um, as you usually do. Uh, because, um, it sounds real good when you're making the plans. It looks real good on paper, but if things aren't enforced um, maintained and kept up, even though an order of conditions says it has to, it often isn't. We know that. It's just a reality. Um, and therefore neighbors and new new homeowners in that area could very well run into problems because of it. So just keeping that into mind, I have some real concerns about um, the project in this particular area. Um, and just to keep in mind that orders of conditions, you know, they're they're really not a fail safe. They really aren't. Um, I've seen it firsthand. I'm I'm still waiting for some orders of conditions for fifteen years to go to be met and they have not. So um, it is a constant battle for, um, uh, some neighborhoods and some some, um, residents uh, to to you know, live with orders of conditions that are are not being met. So that was just sort of a, uh, a reminder to, you know, keep the longitudinal effects of this in mind, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bron. And just so you know, the order of conditions would come from Conservation Commission, wouldn't come from the planning board. You know, the engineering would would require and request, uh, maintenance issues, so it would be up to whoever is designated to oversee that. Part of this would be through the conservation because they will you know, maintain jurisdiction over some of this, but other portions of it is gonna either go to the building department, the engineering department or something like that, so.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any comments from the public at this point? All right, uh, and any of the board members have any comments for now? Okay. All right, so we are going to continue this, uh, public hearing per the applicant's request, uh, till March eighth. Susan, I don't know if you could help me out. Do we? I don't have my notes. Do we already have a public hearing scheduled for that night that you know of? Cause we do need to set the time and I don't wanna be conflict.
No, we did not.
Don't, okay, good. Um, all right, so we're gonna continue the public hearing for Stark Ave till March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and that's gonna be at seven fifteen. All right. All right, thank you, Peter.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, um, switching back to, uh, the item we'd started, uh, discussion of changing street names. Bill, I don't know if you have anything that we could you know, put up to start discuss discussions or is it all still kind of in a
I guess why?
Tabulation at this point.
I do, I can, just give me a minute. It might run into the same situ- situation on which computer? Is it my home computer or on my work computer, so? Yeah, I have I have, um, the Westford Town um, signage information. I have Welfleet. Um, also Boston and let me just see, and then I have a mix of information pulled into a spreadsheet. Thank you, Jim. For, um, different criteria, whether it's, you know, the application process, um, required reviews or the notice, um, public process and then the execution of the change. And a lot of these are in like, who approves it? What different, um, precedent codes are set up? And this is more for a range and, um, Jimmy even looked at, um, California, Florida, Virginia, a few other places. So real interesting poll of information, um, really just looking at common threads and common to the Boston one as well. Like the the street name cannot have changed within the past twenty-five years. There's a few other towns I have a few that too.
Yeah, Bill, does it make sense to just pull up that spreadsheet or if there's anything that's been formatted afterwards, um, with just some of the high level summaries?
Yeah, I was thinking that or just pull up any other towns for now, just so we can get a, you know, a glimpse of what we're we're dealing with here. Um, we're not, this isn't a huge, um, you know, multi-level step here. It's 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 outlined pretty clearly of what needs to be done, so.
Matt, if you give me the ability, I can share my screen. It looks like Bill might be frozen. But I I've got, well, at least the portion I put together, um, compiled.
All right, I think you should be able to share now.
Yep. Can you see that?
Yes.
So what I did is I put together a, um, I pulled together, uh, you know, a number of references Bill Bill was discussing from Boston, New Hampshire, other municipalities is able to find locations of. And I kind of broke up the spreadsheet into, you know, these are specific criterion that you have to meet in order to even be eligible to change a street name and different criterion. If you do choose a name, you know, things that cannot have that cannot have. Um, in terms of the application process that Bill was talking about, here's kind of some of the, you know, the you know, sample filing fees that I was found in them, including, uh, zero to from randomly from zero to almost four thousand dollars. And then different reviews and or notices that are required. Um, and you know, what we would have to decide whether or not we wanted to make it, you know, that Wakefield Fire has to approve or is they have to notify, you know, that type of decision. And then some of the kind of the public process conversations. Um, you know, some municipalities decided that there was a specific timeline after the initial application for reviews for town departments. Or a minimum of two weeks notice for a state or public hearing, or some did not require that. And if all owners consent, then the public hearing is not required is one, was one strategy that someone used. And then there's the other applications in terms of actually executing it, you know, in terms of you know, making it so the applicant has to pay for the signage or if there's, you know, who who needs to be noticed for the a specific change, whether it's contained to only the people on the street that they live there, or if it's actually noticed to the entirety of the town or some other, um, some other wider catch range than just the street itself.
So Jim, are are you uh, you've reviewed a lot of this. Do you think this is something that would go to town meeting to vote on, or do you think it should stay at the, you know, the planning board, uh, recommends it and it goes to town council or something like that? How how would you think would be the the way you you would see this happening in Wakefield?
Personally, I I think that going to town meeting would be drastic overkill. You know, unless you're going the San Mateo, California route, which is a four to six month route, but most other municipalities appear to go, you know, some of them was as as easy as staff could make the change. Um, I don't know if we necessarily wanna go that route, but I also don't think we need to go the the full route. I think planning board and then refer- reference the town council probably makes a lot of sense. Or frankly, if town council is lamentable to it, just having the planning board be the ultimate, uh, ultimately, the ultimate jurisdiction associated with it.
All right. So, uh, what what we're gonna have to do here is basically come up with a bylaw, the general bylaw. The planning board would be the sponsor of it, so, um, we we could make the, you know, we can make the the planning board, the 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 public hearing authority or you know, and then once we hear it, send it back to town council or it could go to the town council first and then it's gotta come to the planning board or however we wanna do that, so. I know we don't wanna make things overly complicated, but then again, we don't want it so simple that streets are getting changed, uh, all the time. So.
I think, I think some of the, the, some of the stuff that seemed like it really would weed out a lot of it were some of the elements associated with the criterion of what could or could not even be renamed. You know, not not renaming within the, you know, it has to be at least twenty-five years since it got renamed. It can't be soup, you know, confusingly similar to something else in town makes sense, right? It's not to be used to honor any living person. At, you know, not after a corporation and then, you know, not having punctuation, you know, some of those types of things are are in quality, things we really probably should do. And then a number of municipalities even had, you could, it couldn't be longer than fourteen letters or longer than twelve, twenty letters, depending on which one, but I think some of those things kind of set a barrier to entry. You know, I think most of the places that are probably try to change name of street would probably change it to something that's a corporation and or a living person, which I think automatically would weed out a large number of these requests. I I think are steps the board should take in order to accommodate and minimize the number of changes.
Okay. Um, and have you guys looked at like immediately surrounding towns, uh, Reading, Stonem Lynnfield, uh, because ultimately, that's how we always compare ourselves to our neighbors, so, um.
To be perfectly blunt, I had a very difficult time finding a a policy that was written out by anyone. Um, you know, Boston had one that was pretty easy to find, you know, and some of these other municipalities around the country, but I had a really difficult time even crawling through, uh, like Winchester, for example, you know, going through all their web, all their websites. I couldn't find anything that seemed to be a definitive smoking gun. Maybe I'm just too dumb or didn't wasn't patient enough to find it, but I had a hard time finding anything equivalent in Stonem as well.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully Erin can do a little digging to see, you know, if there was a process in these other towns, if people have even been approached about changing street names of, you know, what they would do without a bylaw, so. All right, well, I think this is a good, a good start. Um, we'll have to have this on another upcoming meeting so we can continue flushing this out a little bit. Once we come up with something, again, we're gonna have to send it, you know, once we come up with what we think it is appropriate, we need to send it to the town council. They need to prove it. And then basically, I think, send it back to us for a public hearing at that point. And then then it goes on to Tom, uh, Tom Warren. So the, um, Tom Mullen's gonna have to look at it too. So, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that need to vet this before it can really even start, you know, become, become a bylaw, so.
With, and Matt, point of clarification, is this a this is a bylaw, so it does not require a town um, town meeting vote, correct?
Yes, it it I I think it still needs to go to town meeting. I'm not sure, but I I could be wrong about that. Does anyone else have any insight on that or?
Matt, my, uh, sorry, I dropped off there. My my laptop, I think, is done. Um, I don't know where I dropped off, but, um, I did catch up with what Jim was presenting on the Excel spreadsheet. My recollection is town meeting, two-thirds vote for a zoning bylaw change. And I think this would be a bylaw change, so, um, I think it's just, we have to ask town council, Mr. Mullen, to find out for sure.
But he said this would be a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so.
Okay.
In that case, I don't know.
I
The process on that, so.
Okay.
But we'll have to look into that, so. All right, um, so we will schedule this for another upcoming meeting.
Go ahead, Jim.
As I say, in the meantime, Matt, do we want to, um, to distribute? I'm assuming that Bill's got, you know, this is what I had and assuming he layered what other people had put together as well. Do we wanna distribute that to the round balance of the board so people who come with an informed, uh, you know, understanding what some of the, you know, A or B options are. And then after that, we can have someone, you know, draft whatever the bylaw wants to be.
Exactly. That would be great if we could all, if we'd all review it and then come up with what we think in our, you know, which individual would like to see. Um, we can put it together and come up with hopefully something that's, uh, workable for the town.
Well, that gave, well, I guess I would just wanna make sure we give Aaron enough time to um, reach out to local abutting towns, municipalities to see if they have any of this, but I would like to see. I I also had a very difficult time trying to find for the surrounding times towns, but if Aaron has more success, I would love to also see that material with this research.
Okay. Yeah, I think Aaron's gonna actually need to like talk to other town managers or planning departments to see what their procedures are, so. If they even have anything, so. All right, so, uh, we're gonna put this on a probably on our next meeting to continue discussion. Like I said, I will get the, uh, subdivision rules and regulations and what I've worked on so far, get that out to people too. So we can start discussing that. So as you know, we've got a couple, uh, public hearings for next week, so or not next week, our next meeting, so it's gonna be a busy meeting. Should be interesting, so. Um, all right, just wanna move on to item number five, I, uh, which is items not anticipated by the chair. I don't have anything else at this point. I don't know if anyone else has anything.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure thing.
So the changing of the street name, are we gonna do this on February twenty-second or are we doing it March eighth? so the changing of the street name, are we gonna do this on February twenty-second, or are we doing it March eighth?
Uh on the, uh the twenty-second, we'll put this on another agenda item.
Okay.
We should have some should have worked through this a little bit, and even put in a discussion of subdivision rules and regulation changes, so. So tonight's item four and five can carry over to our next meeting. Um and then you guys saw that there was uh the postings have gone in the paper. They're gonna go, they went in uh Monday night, and they're gonna go in on next Monday, so it's gonna run two weeks before the public hearings, so. All right. Anyone else have anything they want to add at this point, anticipated? Jim?
Uh this is a question for Theo. Um has the next master plan meeting been scheduled?
No, it has not. Um I think uh they're still uh collating uh people's availability, so um yeah. Yeah, I think they were thinking the end of February, beginning of March, um and then a survey, um and then a public meeting.
So Theo, when uh when the notice goes out, can you CC all of us, just so we're aware?
Yes.
Not not that we're gonna be there, but at least I know people always ask me, what's, how's the process going?
Yeah, yeah.
And I say, I don't even know when the next meeting is, so um but.
Um definitely, definitely. I'll I'll get those dates, I think. Um yeah, well, maybe I've got something in email today, so.
All right. Um, all right, here, nothing else? Uh to uh item number six. Motion toward drawn. Anyone wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Sorry. It's about time.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All right.
The race is on mute.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh adjourned. Uh Megan Manassali.
Yes.
Theo Noh.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And Jim Hogan.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, thank you, Susan. Uh, thank you, Erin, for juggling your kids and and helping out, so. We'll see you everyone in two weeks.